Welcome. This is Wednesday, February 10th. Meeting of the Subcommittee on Equity, Inclusion and Diversity of the Everett School Committee. Is now live and I call into order. Let's start the meeting with a roll call, please. Addie.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Barrows.
Present. We have three members present of the Subcommittee. And I believe we also have Mr. Abrazet, our Vice Chair, who is also with us. The meeting tonight is a follow-up to our previous School Committee meeting that we had, where an item was forwarded by the full body, from the full committee to this Subcommittee, to discuss with our special education and English learners their experience with remote learning, but also with special education. But before we jump into that, we have several staff members from our schools, from the Everett Public Schools. And I will start introducing our superintendent, our amazing Superintendent Prietta Relliani, who will then introduce her staff members. Welcome Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. We actually have a pretty large team here from the Everett Public Schools. I think that's because this is a topic that is near and dear to our hearts. So, you know, some of us are even just here to listen. But I was just going to go down the list of names, so I was going to call everybody by first name. And if you could just state your name and your title, that would be wonderful. So I'm going to start with Dave.
Dave O'Connor. Communications Director, Everett Public Schools. Good to be here.
Thank you. Billy?
Hi, I'm Bill Donahue. I'm the Director of Special Education.
Charlie?
Dallas Zabremski, Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Addie?
Adeline Celestin, Executive Associate of Prorgotic Implementation.
Brian?
I think you're on mute, Mr. Wallace.
He might have to connect.
Yeah, can anyone hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Can anybody hear me okay now?
Now we can.
All right, great.
Oh, so your name and title.
Brian Wallace, Principal of the Devon School.
Thank you. Chris?
Chris Barrett, Principal of the Webster School. Thank you for having me here tonight. I look forward to this meeting.
Anne?
Anne Auger, English Learner Director.
Anu?
Hi, Anu Giant, Chief Financial Officer.
Estella?
Hi, Estella Burgasani. I'm a family liaison for the District of Everett.
Meland?
Meland Felisain. I'm the Senior Family Liaison for the Everett Public Schools.
Helen?
Hi, I'm Kevin Shaw, the Assistant Superintendent of Academics for the Everett Public Schools.
And Kim?
Good evening, everyone. Kim Thai, Deputy Superintendent.
I think I got everyone. If I didn't, please tell me now.
Excellent. Thank you. We also have with Astronaut, which is a pleasure, two parents, two moms, and two fighters, Fernanda Rocha and Flavia Souza, both from our CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. They'll be joining and they will be speaking with us this evening. So, as a previous mention, as we, as a district, are discussing coming back to schools for in-person classes through a hybrid model, one of the most important things that we need to do is, of course, to listen to everyone, which we are doing through several channels. But tonight, the discussion that I'd like to have is specifically regarding our special education and our English learners, our students. And I'd like to start this meeting by hearing from parents, from our parents, their experience with our remote learning, how it's been, but also their thoughts on returning to in-person classes through a hybrid. So I'd like to start by hearing members of CPAC. And then we can, members can ask questions as well and comments. But afterwards, we can then turn over to the Superintendent and to her staff to talk to us as well on that. Again, our goal this evening through this Subcommittee meeting is to hear, to learn, but also to get their thoughts, especially for our parents, but also for our educators, on one, how it's been their experience with remote learning, but also their thoughts on returning to in-person classes and what is the impact of it to our special education students and to our English learners. So, before we start with our parents, I'd like to ask our members of the committee if they do have any questions, any comments, before we turn over to our guests tonight. Ms. Lambert, Ms. Murray?
Once we get started.
I have a quick question. And it's just about clarity in terms of knowing from our parents who are here tonight, are they speaking on behalf of themselves and their immediate families or also for the CPAC?
They're speaking on behalf of CPAC. When I reach out to them, I ask them to reach out to their members, to all the parents, to get their thoughts and bring their perspective as well.
So they're bringing a global perspective from the entire group?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So let's then move and now I'd like to introduce again Fernanda Rocha and Flavia Souza, who give their perspective to us. So I don't, I do not need to, we need a Subcommittee motion to bring our guests, but it's up to our members if they'd like to make a motion or if we can go ahead with them. Well, let's go ahead then. Fernanda and Flavia, welcome.
Hi. I think I'll be the first. I prepared something. I wrote something. I'm going to read it right now. Hello, everyone. My name is Fernanda Rocha, and I would like to speak in behalf of special needs parents in our district. As a minority, we are often forgotten or left out. For this reason, I am grateful for this opportunity to be the voice of these children and their families. I always try to put myself in the other's shoes, to be fair as possible. I totally understand and respect the children's concern to keep our school closed due to measures of contamination themselves with COVID-19 and lack of vaccination. However, we have seen a good data show that the percentage in contamination inside the school are really small. Tonight, I do like to share with you all the unfortunate of what a school closure has brought to many, many families in our district. The regression of skill these children had already reached, which took years to meet, are now becoming more and more difficult for families to maintain in a remote education. Families are living daily struggles with their children at home without any kind of support and education. The emotional and physical impact has been beyond imaginable. Children are unable to access online classes since they need the correct support and accommodation that is only possible in person. They were already so behind compared with the children on regular education. But with implementation of remote teaching via Zoom, they are far from behind now. Some simple examples. Behavior such as flexibility and compliance that usually take years to teach, those who have somehow accomplished it has regressed big time. Lack, the lack of routine instruction has made younger children regress in self-independence. Children with behavior challenge are now self-harms or harm others. Children with attention disorder are unable to follow online classes. Children with special needs are unable to sit in front of the computer to process anything that is given to them. Children with autism are now serious difficulty in socializing and communication through Zoom sessions. I truly believe, for this and the other reasons, the best modeling for those childrens are in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernanda. Thank you so much. Ever so after committee, any questions or comments to Fernanda before we hear from Flavia? Nope. Then we can hear from Flavia. Flavia, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. So I am Flavia. I work very closely with Fernanda. We are part of the CPAC. I also wrote a couple of things, just so I wouldn't forget what to say here. But thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and share everything that we've heard from other parents. So parents of special needs children has reached out to us, to me and Fernanda, and has shared so many struggles they have been facing for almost one year now. Even though teachers are doing their best in providing services and support, it is not the right setting for these kids. Remote learning does not work for them. We have heard of regressions in behaviors, self-independence socially and emotionally. These childrens were brought up with many supports and accommodations since the day they received the diagnosis. Many of them started school when they were three years old. School is part of their lives. They need the structure, the hand-on-hand, the commendations, and the support that only a professional can give to them so that they can succeed in life. And now we, in our district, as we all know, we also have parents who don't speak English. And many of those families are with kids with special needs. So that's another barrier right there, trying to communicate. And like I said, teachers are trying their best. We have the family license now who can reach out to families and can, can help out. But once you're leaving in that, in your home, it's, it's really hard. It is hard enough for a parent who can speak English, like me and Fernanda, who can write emails, who can ask for help and everything. But I can just imagine how hard it is for those that can't. And unfortunately, none of these supports are being accomplished through remote learning. It is very hard for us too, as a parent, to decide to send in a child or not due to COVID. It's a very hard decision and it is a decision that any parent, you can opt in or you can opt out. But what we've heard the most is that when we do measure the gains and the losses, the risk on going to school is a better answer right now for our children due to all the regressions and all the behaviors and everything that's happening at home. And just, these childrens depends on the services to one day live independently. School is a big part of their lives. It doesn't matter if they're in elementary school or high school or middle school. They're, they're learning different kind of strategies and things like that. High schools are going through different things that little ones are, but they all need that support. They always have that support. So it's, they pretty much lost everything. So we definitely heard from parents and we do believe that remote learning is not working. We've been through this. We're trying. And most of the kids are turning off videos. They don't want to be part of this. They don't turn on the camera. If they're sitting in front of there, parents would ask them, "Did you hear what the teacher said? Like do this or do that?" And they, they can't process. It's not the right setting for these kids. Definitely it's in person. They, they do need that in-person service.
Thank you, Flavia.
Thank you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you. And a question to either of you. Do you have concerns about the transition? And, you know, I, I have an autistic child myself, so have you heard of concerns about transitioning? Or have those concerns yourself?
Fernanda? Do you want me to take that? Yeah, okay. So yes, definitely. That's definitely on our minds. We have talked to parents before. And right now, everyone is struggling so much that we do understand that there's, there, there needs to be a transition, some support of these kids. We can't just throw them there and say, "Hey, this is what it is. You're going back to school two days a week and, and then two days, like three days pretty much at home." Like there need to be a kind of a plan. But as, speaking to myself, as my own family now, my, my child does go to a learning center, e-learning center. And we started at the end of September. It was the best thing for him. It was very hard at home and my biggest concerns were safety. Is he keeping his mask on? Is the other kids keeping the mask on? Of course, we think about the staff. The staff is our number one priority here because the, the infections with kids gladly, in some ways, it's not as much as a staff. And he picked it up first week. I'm not even kidding. He has been exposed, like when we went to the park, when we went like on walks, that he needed a mask. But that was my first, my number one concern. It was safety and wearing a mask and all of that, following the rules, staying far away from other kids, staying in their own space and things like that. And I'm glad, like this is my experience, that it did work. And I think with the right plan, these kids could do it because they do pick up. They, they, they use, their, their whole lives is settled up in a structure, right? Everything is for them. It's a schedule. They are pretty much, they follow every step of the things. And I think if there's a right plan, there's the right support, they are able to do it. And once they get the, the hang of things, I'm pretty sure it's part of their lives. They're going to be able to get back to it.
And, because one of my concerns, in addition to transitioning back to in-person is, can you hear me okay?
It's, it's a little bit. Can you try, can you say it again, Samin?
One of my concerns, in addition to transitioning back in, is then if we have to close for a period of time, if there's an exposure, which becomes more likely the more bodies you have in the building. And so, you know, just from a social, emotional perspective, I don't know, maybe he experienced that, if he did okay with the while and then going back in, those disruptions.
Yeah. I think I understood what you said. You were cutting off a little bit, but I, so we, we had a case in the school where we had to, to, a whole situation in myself, what happened to my family. This is not about other families. So he needed to get tested and everything before going back to school was nothing with COVID or anything. He did somewhat understand, but my son is actually younger. So this is from, it's not compared to other kids. So he didn't quite, he understands how COVID is and how dangerous, how we need to make ourselves clean, wash our hands and all of that. But I don't think he understood the whole idea, so he was fine going back. But talking to other parents, Fernanda and I, we, we know many other parents in other districts and parents with kids of all ages as well. Of course, the older kids, I do believe there's somewhat of an anxiety going back to that. But their kids are struggling with anxiety with other stuff too, right? And what do we have to do when they're in that process? We give them support. We give them the right support, the right information. Because I believe when kids know what's going on and what they can expect and things like that, they are in somewhat control. And I think it does help for kids with special needs to know somewhat information, to be able to understand, to retrain the, the, the right information and understand a little bit what's going on. I've known parents in other districts with kids that have been going on a hybrid from September. And they were really, really nervous, like those first weeks, the kids, they, they were crying. They were, they were really struggling. And this is older kids that I'm talking about. They're older kids and they were crying to go back to school. They didn't know what to expect. They were fearing that other, for their safety, because they do have a better idea what this is. And now looking, even like after, like talking to some parents in other districts, within three, four weeks, they were doing so much better. Like they can't even imagine like taking away hybrid right now. So I think, yes, we need to, to think about that. We need to understand that these kids are going to have anxiety. They're going to have questions. They might have even more behaviors because as we learned with autism, is things will get worse before it gets better. And it is true with any kind of transition, any kind of new things coming up in life, they will get worse before it gets better. And thinking they've been in this whole unstructured place for almost a year now. So it is expected that there will need to be a plan before we can see like good out of it. But they do need to, at least what we've heard from other parents is that they do need to go back. They do need to have that structured back.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I, or just quickly just follow up on the transition piece?
Sure, Mr. Barrett. Just one quick second, because I think Ms. Ma, Ms. Murray had her hand up.
I actually had a different but related question, so I'm happy to yield to Mr. Barrett so that he can speak directly to her point.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Ms. Murray. I just want to speak just quickly to the, the transition piece. I was greatly impressed when we brought back grades three to five at the Webster School. Regarding, and we did understand that there would be, you know, the challenges with transition and working with those students and staff to really help the students acclimate and understand the COVID protocols we had in place. I thought it would, you know, this is the first time bringing back several grade levels to a school at Everett, that I thought it would be a couple of weeks. I will say I was impressed and I'm not surprised on how wonderful the students are at the Webster School, how they were able to quickly transition with the masks, protocols in place, and quickly follow what we had developed so that we could, you know, maintain the safety of our staff and our students. Because like, Flavia, I can, I absolutely understand you and I thank you for your work on CPAC. And Fernanda, I thank you also. But I think these students certainly came ready. I want to thank the parents that helped us do that. But I think as we transitioned to the hybrid model, I think we should look at these students as, you know, really the leaders that we needed to demonstrate to all of us that it can be a great success. And this population certainly did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, everybody tonight, and helping us sort of try to think through all of this. I guess my first question is for the parents, but Mr. Barrett and Mr. Wallace, you may have some input in this as well. I think one of the things that the teachers are struggling with right now, and I don't want to speak for all of the teachers, but one of the things I've been hearing is that they fear that the families and the children won't really understand or don't really know what hybrid's going to look like. When you've talked to the parents who are seeking hybrid, do you feel like they have a pretty good handle on what hybrid will look like when the kids come back? And what can we do to help parents understand better, in your personal opinions, so that when the kids come back, they're not shocked by the difference between traditional schooling and what hybrid might look like? Thank you.
Mr. Barrett and then Flavia and Fernanda?
Yeah, I mean, I could speak at the Webster School. Certainly, Ms. Murray, I know there's the challenges of what hybrid will look like because I know the Superintendent is working with her leadership team to develop that plan right now. And once we put together a model for the whole school system on hybrid that is safe and ready for all of the students of Everett Public Schools, I think what we can do now, and what I've done with speaking to the families at the Webster School, is look to the success we've had with our hybrid model. Because I, I speak with, I mean, my wife's a fourth grade teacher at the Lafayette and I hear it almost every night regarding the safety of the teachers. I think for us, and at the Webster School especially, in the schools that have students that have returned, is look at the success we've had with the safety and the protocols in place. Certainly, there was a lot of anxiety with the, myself and the teachers at the Webster School. But I think once we hit the ground running, we develop those protocols and not only just develop the protocols we're used from day one, but understand that we're going to lean on the leadership of the teachers to help us to continually strengthen those protocols and look for ways that we could develop a community where it wasn't so much focused on COVID-19 and safety, but more so creating and maintaining the, you know, the family atmosphere and the community of the Webster School. I think for me, speaking as a administrator and certainly a husband of a teacher, is really them having the confidence, looking at what we're already doing in Everett. And the teachers, I can say absolutely for the Webster School teachers, and I know Mr. Wallace, same with the Devens, the teachers, I think, would be the first ones to say that we've done it in such a way where they feel safe and the students feel safe. And I think the parents absolutely at the Webster School, I think are comfortable and confident with the plan we have in place. Certainly, we are always open to constructive criticism and looking to improve each and every day. And I welcome that at the Webster School, but just having that open communication really pointed to the success we already have, Ms. Murray, as we developed that plan for the whole district, which certainly hybrid is going to look different for each grade level and each school, in each program.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Flavia or Fernanda? Or both?
The parents understand how hybrid is and they needed this support. But in my point of view, it's all about communication. If the school has transparency and communication really with parents in, in all languages, and I think it'll be helpful for those childrens and parents, like decrease a little bit the anxiety and start to prepare those childrens. Because our children, if you, we prepare them, if you, if you know, we can prepare. And then we can prepare and what they expect, we give visual support, everything they need, we can support. But parents, they understand and they really, really ask for us to come in here tonight and ask for them to be their voices. They really need the hybrid. They need. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernanda. Flavia, would you like to add any?
Or, I think that, like Fernanda said, parents do understand we are ready in February. So a lot of parents also have families and other people in other districts. There's a lot of districts around us who has been doing this, some since September, some since November. So the word is out and parents, when they talk to each other, they ask about it. They, they want to know a little bit more. So it's becoming our somewhat new normal, right? Back in March, and then by the summer, September, the, the remote learning was our new, our new normal. Now hybrid is our new model, normal, and parents are willing to help. And I think communication, like Fernanda said, is the number one. Once parents know what's going on, they can communicate to the, the school and say, "This is what's going on. What can I do to help? How can I help? How can I make this transition more smoothly?" And I understand what Mr. Barrett also said, that it's going to look different for every grade. It's not going to be the same thing in, in the same school, different school, every grade is going, everything is going to look different. And I think once we prepare, we give the information, because sometimes we don't want, it's almost like, oh, we're not giving the child the information because they don't understand. But once we deal with visual or what, what
But once we deal with visual or what, what kind of information they, your child retrained. So every child in every family, they take information differently. So once we give the, the, the family the support, the information. And the child and that the family can work together at home, I do believe the transition is possible and it is smooth.
Thank you. Flavien, Miss Lambert, and then Mister Wallace.
Thank you. And I was just gonna comment, Fernando shares the best social stories. Which are great visuals for kids and maybe. We can partner um, to be able to share those. Because I think they help not just with students with autism or. But also younger students, I think visuals always help. Anxiety. Um, but I did just have another question. How many students are attending?
Miss Lambert, your, your sound is a little goes on and off, on and off. Not sure if Mister Barrett heard it. The question well, but Mister Barrett?
I don't know what's going on. Um, how many students are attending right now?
At the students.
At the Webster.
Well, Webster Schools, we brought back um, grades three to five um, of our subset per program. That runs about, about eight students uh, for that program. Then we have. Another group of about six students um, also. Um, and in a way that you might think that that's a small amount of students, um, but certainly. Um, these students need that type of support and, and um, the support and, and the. In the space necessary to be a, a great success um, with those students. Um, in the grades three to five, it takes about four to six staff members to effectively um, provide them the instruction. And the support that they need to be a, a great success. Um, so it's certainly, it's, it sounds like a small number, but it. Certainly is a large number for grades three to five at the Webster School. And I just really, I, I want to applaud the teachers, especially for those grades three to five and all of the parents at the Webster School, because. Before we brought the students back, um, they really were part of helping us develop the plan in the layout of the classrooms. And uh, thanks to Priya uh, for providing a lot of the support and, and the dividers in the classrooms. Um, the teachers had a lot of anxiety, but certainly with the, the support of the school committee and the superintendent. Um, we would hit, like I said, hit the ground running.
Thank Mister Barrett. Mister Wallace.
I, I, so I just want to reiterate something. I, I think we all. Have read as accommodations and IEPs. That the most ideal environment for our kids to succeed are environments that are. Highly structured with clear expectations and predictable routines. We all must have read that. Hundreds of times, you know, in the course of our career. Um, so not only is that like what I would say a setting condition for success. But that only, it, it not only works for kids, it works for adults. And, and the reason I'm mentioning that is because. We're actually open full time and we have been since September, so we're not hybrid. It's, we're, we're just, we're an auction. If, if parents would like to see their kids attend full time in person, they can. If they prefer they work remotely, that's fine too. Uh, so since September, we, we plan to accommodate as many kids as we could, could, uh, as many students as we could. Uh, in September. And, and the reason I touch upon highly structured environment with clear expectations and predictable routines is. Because that's exactly what made the staff feel better about working in person. Uh, made me as a principal feel a little less anxious about opening the building. Uh, and certainly um. Put some parents at ease. Uh, in addition to that. It also was pretty clear for the kids to come into the environment, even though it was the same environment, it was a little changed. But those changes were very obvious. So, so the transition was, was really smooth, it was really easy. Um, I, I, I did a virtual tour with administrators the other day, so they could see how the building looks. But you know, I, I said this in a meeting with the, the principals. Uh, this morning, that in, in September. You know, naturally, I was, I was very anxious to open the building and, and. As we gradually put these visuals in place and we saw how things would play out. We all started to feel less anxious about offering in-person services. Um, so that's a big thing, you, you know, and, and if, if it were possible, I'd like to get more teachers there to see what that looks like. Because uh, I, I know, I know the superintendent's been to the building, I know Mister Donahue has been there. Um, but it's really not hard to kind of grasp what it looks like when you're there and you're in person and you see it. You know, but that, I think that itself makes people feel a little less anxious. And that's just directly tied into, you know, a setting condition where we create an environment, it's structured. The expectations are clear and the routines are predictable. And I think that's what the parents are touching on.
Great, thank you. Um. I believe Miss Lambert is having a, a mic issue, but she has a question to Mister Donahue, but before I ask uh, Miss Lambert question. Uh, to Mister Donahue, which she wrote, so I can ask on her behalf, because she having a problem with the microphone, Mister Abruzzo. Welcome, Mister Abruzzo.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, I know I'm just sort of an observer here, but. I don't believe a lot in statistics, but. I do notice all the time when our fine superintendent sends out the notices of the COVID. You know, who has it, who got it, what school? And this is directed to uh, Doctor Wallace and to Mister Barrett. I don't recall seeing a COVID at either one of your schools. Uh, I might be wrong, because it seems like there's a large number at the Madeline English. And the Lafayette. And occasionally the high school I see them, but. Is, I, I mean, are your numbers, total numbers of people in the school? Less than the other schools or? Uh, is my whole hypothesis here wrong that uh? It's not the case what I'm saying, but I just get the sense that I don't see. The Webster or the Devens, I get the feeling I don't see that uh, there's been. Positives or contact tracing related to your schools. Am I right or wrong? And now the superintendent would like to hear from you too.
And they can absolutely answer specifically for their schools, but knowing after we disaggregate all the information, I will say that the incidence rates at their schools have been lower. So we have had some incidents, but I think you're right on in the fact that it has been less. And we have, because again, when we're looking at the data, we're always trying to figure out the whys. And we do wonder if it's because in those schools you have these very, which is what we want in our hybrid settings. These very discreet cohorts that are staying together in smaller environments versus in the e-learning centers where we have. Students who are spaced appropriately and we have the masks and all of that, but there are more students in a given space. Uh, but again, the principals would be the best ones to speak to that.
So, so we, we've had one case, Mister Abruzzo, since, since we opened. So um, you know, I, I would confidently say that a data shows. That with these guidelines implemented. You know, I, I, I said this earlier today, that in, in, in September, I, I would say, you know, our goal is to reduce risk. You know, now I can confidently say in February that we can minimize risk. Um, the, these guidelines prove that they can be effective.
Yeah, I would, uh, Miss Maury, I apologize.
Go ahead, Mister Martin, then Miss Maury can.
Yeah, I, I think, um, and I just wanted, uh, the Webster School is not hybrid, it is of like the, the Devon School. Um, full five day a week program. Um, I think the cohorts as the superintendent spoke to, I think that. Um, can speaks to a lot of the success we certainly have had. Um, with some of the cases of COVID related to the Webster School was really indirect relation. Um, of those COVID cases that were connected to the actual Webster School. Um, I do think having classes that are dedicated, certainly with staff that understand the protocols, uh, students that are familiar with them. Um, I thought when we first put the red dots out in the hallways, I was the first one to say, gee, and I'm thinking of my own kids. I can't see my own son, Michael, standing on that red dot and not moving. Uh, the first day the students came into the building, they stood on the red dots and they did not move. Um, they, and I think it's that familiarity with the teachers, the teachers had prepared them well remotely. As I think Flavien and Fernando were speaking about the transition piece. So when the, by the students, the time the students came into the building, they knew the protocols in place. And they have certainly the trust of the teachers and the expectations in each classroom. I do. Certainly, the, the e-learning centers are larger, a lot larger than the Webster School and management of an e-learning center. Certainly can be complex, because like as the superintendent said, those aren't cohorts. Um, certainly, there's just students just grouped together on multiple different devices, multiple different classes through a remote room mode. But thank for that question, Mister Abruzzo.
Well, uh, if I could, Miss Maury, uh, the, the reason I bring this up and again to Fernando, to Flavia. To all the parents, everybody out there. I'm just. I desperately want the students to get back in school, desperately. Uh, I want everybody to be safe. Uh, I guess what I'm looking for is, you know. Data gets presented as to the dangers of what we're dealing with, okay? But I'm just looking for somewhere to find data that's suggesting that this way, and that's Doctor Wallace, Mister Barrett. I think we're starting to see something here that shows. You know, this is not a do all end, or this is not absolute one way or the other. Obviously, there's going to be risk. You know, and easy for me to say risk, taking risk, but I said, I can speak from the heart. I've got a grandson and a granddaughter right now who actually should be in school. I think he desperately needs to be in school as he's about to turn five. And I mean, I'm just looking at this, that. My fear is the longer we go. That this basically, this whole year becomes just a throwaway year. That, that's my fear. Is that at some point in time. I believe hybrid, we start it and we go. I, I just believe that we have to do that. And I'm just looking to you, I'm so happy to hear that it sounds like the parents. Are more in agreement with me than with, uh, as opposed to. Let's keep everybody home. I know there's a lot of people that have approached me just saying, let's shut down the whole year. See you in September. And I mean, um, it, it stuns me to say that, but the flip side of that is. There's people that came up to me today who've told me they don't plan on getting the vaccine under any circumstances. So, I mean, this is the kind of mentality that we're dealing with. But I just want you to know that in my mind, the kids desperately have to get back, the teachers desperately have to get back. And I just want to thank you and hopefully somehow we can get together and uh, come up with a plan. And I guess what you're telling me is the hybrid right now is um, the direction we should be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Abruzzo. Uh, Miss Maury, you can go ahead and then I can ask uh, the question that uh, Miss Lambert had.
You can go ahead. Miss Lambert's been waiting.
Okay. Thank you. So uh, the question from Mister Donahue, um, how will we accommodate least restrict, uh? Restrictive environment while getting our high needs students back? Will supplemental IEPs be possible?
Yes, one, but that would be the um. Not the preferred model that we would rather. A lot of our planning unfortunately will happen after the cohorts. And the parents tell us what they want to do. At that point, then we have to go school by school, program by program. We've been meeting with sub-separate teachers. To talk about what they need, their concerns. Um, I met with some teachers. Earlier this week, a little bit last week, we've been meeting with ETLs, so we would prefer. To take some classes and break it up based on how the hybrid looks to get them included in an actual classroom as much as possible. We do not want kids coming into school and sitting in one room all day. So that really is what it boils down to, but we have a bunch of plans in place. Uh, you know, we talked about some services may be able to go in with Zoom. We may have extra classrooms, we may have access to areas that aren't being used during COVID if the cafeteria is around. So we've been looking at all ancillary services, but we've been looking at the ability for students to get social interaction. Because we're gonna really look at that first. So that's why we've been doing a lot of partnerships and trying to build relationships with outside agencies. Because everything, we're trying to get all our meetings caught up. We're trying to have double meetings for people that missed them last spring. Um, we're, we're getting back on the timelines as if COVID didn't happen, but at the same time. We have teams of people that are attending professional development with outside agencies. And bringing that back into us, so we can start developing plans for students when they come back. So a lot, Miss Lambert's gonna rely on what the lists look like when I see what students ought to come back in.
Thank you, Mister Bill Hill. Miss Maury.
Um, I just thought it would be appropriate to share with the members of this Zoom meeting that. I don't know if Fernando and Flavia know, but I'm also an educator. I'm just not an educator in Everett. I'm an educator in Boston and I've been back most of this school year, except for a small window of time. When Boston went remote, when our numbers went up to like fifteen percent. Um. And I will say that much like Mister Barrett and Mister Wallace were saying. Before I came back, my anxiety was really, really high. Um, since being back with relatively small numbers reflected by both Mister Wallace and Mister Barrett as well. Um, I've felt pretty confident and very, very safe. I feel like my students take. The um, virus very seriously. They do not want to get their families sick. They understand that it's serious. I teach high school. So I think that there is more of an awareness for what can happen with the older kids. Um, but I have seen a huge difference with my kids who have come back. Um, even just uh, last week, we had two remote snow days in Boston where the kids had to come to class in Zoom. And then I didn't, so I didn't see them for three days in a row, because our Wednesday is a remote day. And on that Thursday, when they came in, it was like someone had wound up a little wind up in their backs. They just. Talk, 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 talk. Because when they were on Zoom, they said nothing. For three straight days, they said nothing. But the second they were in front of me again, they wanted to talk, they wanted to engage and, and I think it's really hard. Speaking as both a parent and a teacher for children who are English language learners or special needs. To react and have conversations with twenty. Black boxes with people's names in them. They don't see facial expressions, they don't see the warmth of the human condition, they don't. Get to engage with any human being except their teacher, their teacher's the only one with the box on. And I think that's a big ask for most kids. But I think kids who have any sort of challenges around that stuff, it becomes even more difficult. Um, but to the same end, I think when we move to hybrid. We're gonna see gains socially in a lot of our kids. But I don't know that we'll see the big academic gains right away. Because in fact, it's easier to teach kids all on one platform. And when you have kids in front of you and kids on the computer and you're teaching them their academics. At least at first. For the teachers, that's going to be a big challenge. And I expect that it will look messy. But that doesn't mean it's not worth it. It just means that we need to give those teachers some time, just like we needed to give them time to learn how to do remote. We need to give them the time to learn how to do and build their confidence in hybrid without being too judgmental. And accepting the wins where we can get them, especially when a lot of those wins are gonna be social emotional in the beginning, I think. But that's just from my personal experience and I don't know if that's helpful to any of you or not, but I just thought it was worth sharing.
Thank you, uh, Miss Maury. Which in that note, uh, our teacher's voice uh, is extremely important. Uh, and I believe the superintendent, I know the superintendent is uh, in negotiations with the Everett Teachers Association. Uh, we as school committee, committee members received several messages from teachers concerned with um. the possibility of returning to class because of this pandemic. And I know that the superintendent and her team are meeting with them, meeting with our teachers. And this this meeting tonight is to hear from, especially from our parents, specifically regarding our special education and our English learners and how the experience has been, but also thoughts on on this return. So again, just to re emphasize that our teachers' voice are extremely important in this process and we've been hearing, we've been taking all the into consideration their concerns and I know that the Everett Teachers Association is in communication, in negotiations with our administrators. So looking forward for for that. In on that note, as someone who, you know, came to this country with almost zero English, going to school was hard. And I'd like actually to bring and hear from our Ms. Auger and Auger, the director of the English Ling- well, it used to be called, right? My time, English Language Learners, but I think we have changed to English Learners. And to hear her thoughts on how it's been the impact. Before I actually we hear from Ms. Auger, just want to share that once we we started classes, I visit, I've been visiting schools, our schools, and I visited in the beginning of the school year, Everett High. And I went to our e-learning centers. At least half of the kids who were there were English learners. Some of them who have come to to the country literally few months ago and they were receiving assistance from our paraprofessionals and from family liaisons especially, which I'm very thankful that some of them are here with us. It was extremely important for them to be, even though they were in front of a computer, but just the fact that they had someone that they could communicate in Spanish. And they shared with me, they they were like, I just can't see these kids at home right now because they would not be in front of a computer with their very limited English skills. So Ms. Auger, it would be great to hear your experience also with our English learners.
Thank you so much. Sorry?
But even me and welcome.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. I will speak a little bit about the remote learning in terms of second language acquisition. And then I'll turn it over to two of my colleagues, our family liaisons, to read direct sort of testimony from EL parents that has been translated from our different language communities. So, you know, I'll start off by saying that our teachers have been incredibly agile in this transition. I, you know, even though I'm a district leader, I I'm fortunately still evaluating the ESL teachers K through twelve in this city. So I do get to watch a lot of lessons and provide feedback and coach teachers still. And I, some of the lessons I've seen and the engagement that they've been able to garner using, not even joking, six or seven platforms and one thirty minute lesson to make it land and to make it engaging has been very, very impressive. Unfortunately, with our English learners, especially our level ones who might be in their first year in the United States, we've we've leveraged technology as far as it can go. And so I think without putting down any of the agility or the abilities of our teacher, it's just sort of we've maxed out. And I I'd like to share a little bit instructionally about the benefits of having English learners return to buildings for in person despite our successes in remote learning. It's important to note that English learner instructional programming in Everett is not self-contained in one classroom with one teacher. So in order to bring English learners back to in-person instruction or hybrid instruction, all teachers need to be present. Because ELs are included in the same instruction as their native English speaking peers throughout the day. This is a program that we as a district have built over the past four years that I'm extremely proud of. However, ironically, it's making the return for ELs more convoluted than if they were taught in a separate strand with one teacher all day. In order for ELs to progress, both in terms of language development and academically, it is necessary for them to be immersed in the school environment for for the highest development possible. Exposure to an interaction with native English speaking and bilingual peers through in-class academic activities, albeit six feet apart, such as partner reading and working in small groups to solve problems, serves to facilitate the use and retention of academic language that ELs need to grow linguistically. And as Ms. Murray discussed before, that student to student feedback and interaction just really is impossible in a in a Zoom session. Furthermore, being in the classroom will enable ELs to simultaneously see their teachers' gestures and body language while they follow along with the lesson or complete their work, both of which will enhance comprehension of the language and material being taught. Being physically present will also encourage ELs to focus more closely on the tasks at hand. Because learning a new language is so mentally taxing. The distractions of home life as well as the ability to disengage electronically may severely hinder an EL's ability to concentrate in a remote learning environment. In-person learning eliminates these issues, thereby allowing ELs to remain attentive to what is being said and taught. In addition to the academic benefits, being immersed in a school setting that is all in English enhances both social language development and knowledge of school culture and the language that comes with school culture. Walking the halls and hearing announcements in English, spontaneously chatting with English-speaking friends about their day, answering native English speaker speaking peers' questions that arise, learning classroom routines and the language of classroom routines ensures that students are gaining regular opportunities to engage with social English and opportunities to meet school expectations. So although, I mean, the our platforms are all in English, clever, all of our buttons are in English, they've certainly adapted to that and learned all of that vocabulary, but there's a whole school culture waiting for those students that they need to learn as soon as possible to feel comfortable in that environment that it would be impossible to to add to our to our list of necessities for remote learning. So with that said, I'm going to pass it along to Merland first. And she's going to share some parent testimony and just some general sentiments that she's been hearing, a senior family liaison. And then we'll go to Estella for her her points after that.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, the first story I'm going to talk about is about Mr. Kalanga that was not that consented to give his information, phone number, if he needs to be contacted. But I'll keep that for ourselves. His name is Mr. Kalanga. And he's from the Democrat of Republic of Congo. He wanted to make sure that Democrat is stated in his statement. He's a single father that can no longer work, has not been working and that relies on bread of life, of food delivery and everything because his son is at the Parlin. He's in fifth grade. He spoke English very well, picked it up for the past three years that they've been here, but now that he's not exposed to a teacher in the classroom, he's going back to French, where he has regressed from learning he's the skill that he learned very quickly when he was in class. And socially, he's the only child also, so it's just him and the father. The father has had to quit his job due to some inappropriate website that would pop up on the computer. If you're not watching the kids. And he's really afraid of that his son will be exposed to things like that. So he's home and he's constantly trying to switch to play games on the computer instead of doing schoolwork. And Mr. Kalanga sees that some other schools around us, I think the charter schools are open. He's wondering why his son cannot attend school as well if we put all the measures, follow all the protocols of the state. So he doesn't speak English well. He was going to be here tonight. He speaks mostly French and his son is going back speaking French, losing English as he learned it for the past three years. And I have another parent, Naomi Matilas, that also goes to the Parlin. She's twelve years old. She's constantly turning off the camera on the computer, turning turning off all devices that has to do with certain classes that she doesn't like. Mrs. Smith and I, we have been working with the parents who are aware and have been seeing the behaviors. Where she stick her tongue at the teacher and the camera, I mean, it's a total game for her. Then she puts her, she would, she also puts, looks at the window and sees other children outside and want to be with these children. So she's speaking often to herself, by herself and playing games. The father almost lost his job, so mom had had to leave her job right now. And it's extremely hard for them to pay their bills. And we think that she, we refer her to Elliot for counseling, but we think that it's a child that probably has some other issues, but at the same time, we cannot deny that she's just bored and cannot sit in front of the computer all day long and learn from that. So they really, really hope that school is in session where she can learn how to speak English and and have social and emotional productive. So and the last one I have is from LPA president, Ms. Judy Del May. Her son was in the second grade at twelve years old and from the island of Cacos. Twelve years old in the second grade. Mr. Donahue came and helped and he's at the Lafayette right now, but there is more testing that needs to be done. We age placed him. We didn't put him in second grade because he's a tall boy. We put him in fifth grade and he's violent towards the mom when he cannot express himself. And since he's been put aside for so many years, second grade at twelve years old, it's just this kid is there. He has ADHD was the diagnosis that we got from the island of Cacos and Mr. Donahue is doing his best to help us with testing for more because we think there's more. He's, he doesn't need, he doesn't read all right. He's EL one, level one. We did as much as we could to test him, but we put him in level one. This kid, the mother is a single mom also cannot go to work because of his violence. Not anyone can watch him. So from all of us knowing about special ed and everything, so so this is an EL and special ed student. And yet we don't know what the diagnosis were because he was just, they kept on repeating, he kept repeating the class over and over in the Cacos Island. So that mom, she's relying on GTA assistance, which one of our Steve is helping her with, with a D to get food stamps. She can't work. Also, she speaks a little bit of English. She volunteered to be our LPA president. So she has, she's, her son is already behind, has been behind, has been ignored. Because in these other countries, they don't really care about kids with special needs, as we all know. Therefore, she's relying on us to help and we've been doing that. She wants that kid in school because he needs professional help. And I'm not just talking about special ed children or EL students. I've had many phone calls from American families asking when and what we are going to do and that they would like their kids in school because of the mental health issue that these kids are having. Not being around other students and all of this affects them tremendously. Said so from now, I'm going to pass it on to Estella to give out her stuff.
Hello, good evening all. I'm Stella Borgesani, family liaison for the Everett Public Schools. I work with the Medley English School and the Whittier School at the moment. I will read some statements that we as the family liaisons hear on a daily basis from the EL parents. So the first statement we have is, my name is Sarah Linda Verdi. I have three kids attending EPS. My oldest boy and my six-year-old boy go to Kaverian School. My four-year-old girl goes to the pre-kindre at the Webster School. We are a Spanish speaker family. All the instruction is virtual since children have to be at home using Chromebooks to do their assignments. It's very difficult for me to control their frustration when they can't understand or follow directions given by teachers. My six-year-old shuts down the Chromebook and refuses to follow my advice to reconnect back. Therefore, if he were in a class setting, he would benefit from a full day of learning because at home he knows that I'm his mother, but not a teacher. And I have another statement. My name is Sabrina Santos Oliveira Alves, mother of a Parlin student. I came through these texts to rely the difficulties that we are encountering with my son's remote learning. This is his first year in school and he doesn't speak English just like myself. It has been very difficult for both of us. I feel lost and try to be on top of things, but I can't understand what the teacher is saying. I have changed all my work routine to assist him, but unfortunately, we are not seeing any progress. It's very hard to keep a child in front of a computer, especially at home that has many distractions around him. Sometimes he ends up being sleepy and bored. Unfortunately, this remote model is not working for us, no matter how much I try. I really hope that the district would consider the hybrid model as I feel that my son would have a feeling of what real school is like. The teacher and I had exchanged so many messages as well as communicating through an interpreter to attempt to improve the situation, but unfortunately, no success. I'm very concerned with my child.
Hi, my name is Lucy Lenny Barbosa Silva. I'm sorry to bother you, but I want to bring to the school district attention that I have a fifth grader at the Parlin School who is struggling with his remote learning education. I have received several calls from his teacher stating that he's not doing well in the school. But I feel so limited on what I can actually do to help him. He's in an English learning and I don't speak English myself. I really wish that hybrid model could be considered for my son and all the students. I feel that students are not just academically deprived, but emotionally and socially as well with this remote model. I have another statement here. My name is Fernanda Souza, mother of a first grader student at the Parlin School. And I'm very concerned about the present remote model and my child's ability to learn a new language and keep it up with all educational material that has been presented to him. I understand that the pandemic wasn't planned, but at this point, I feel that we should have a better plan on the table to accommodate our kids. I feel that spending so many hours in the front of a screen is causing my child to be distracted and unmotivated with his education. I have one more statement. My name is Fablino Suarez Prado. My son is a second grader EL student at the Whittier School. My experience with the e-learning center as a mother was very significant. I have no one to help my son during class time at home and it turns out that he alone does not study as he should study. The e-learning center contributed a lot to my son's learning. And in addition, he has also been gradually developing English. Contact with other children, even if limited, is being super important. I realize he is less anxious about everything that is happening, maintaining a routine a little more normal. So I think it would, it wouldn't be good for my son a week at the school and a week at home. I have no one to help him with his studies. I believe that a week at home is a lot. He loses the pace. And I think that for hybrid plan would be better two days at the school a week and the other three days at home. But I worry about his stay at home. We live with my mother who works at home and who is already We live with my mother who works at home and who is already an old lady and doesn't understand anything about computers, which makes my son's development difficult and worrying.
Hello, my name is Fabiana da Silva and I have two EL students at Everett Public School. One first grader at the Parlin and a ninth grader at the high school. My family arrived right before the pandemics started and my children didn't have a chance to have a good English acquisition. Adjusting to a new country itself, it's already difficult. Learning a new language through this remote model, it's very challenging. I would really appreciate if my children could have the opportunity to attend a school in person with a teacher.
I also would like to add some data from our Portuguese family liaisons. So we have the family liaison Sara Paiva, who called over 200 EL parents from high school during our inventory update. And 90% were favorable to come back to the building in a hybrid model in a safe way, keeping the safety measures. With no exception, the parents started the subject and asked when the hybrid model will start. And also we have Daniela Braga, a family liaison from Parlin. She headed a survey through text inquiries, asking EL parents about hybrid model. And 311 parents were asked if they prefer to send their students two days a week to the school or every other week in the school. Daniela obtained 136 answers in two weeks, in two days, I'm sorry, 136 answers in two days. 76 families answer they prefer one week in a school, one week remote. 46 families prefer have classes in person twice a week and three days online. 15 families prefer to keep the remote learning as it is right now. And me as a professional that speaks with EL parents every day, I can feel their struggle, trying to give support to their students, but feeling powerless because of the language barriers. I would like to thank everybody for your attention and now I pass the word to Ann back.
Thank you so much. I know the family liaison's work really hard to invite all families for advocacy opportunities like this. So it's exciting to see that so many opted in to share with all of us their opinion. So what can we do right now? Unfortunately, we're still, you know, sort of, it's volunteer basis for the teachers. So four ESL teachers back in December in grades one through three expressed interest in returning to school for these students to start hybrid in January. However, at that point, there was a possibility that maybe we were gonna be coming back hybrid earlier and we didn't wanna overload with two transitions, so we sort of held off. I'm going to be asking those 13 ESL teachers again by the end of the week if they would be willing to return hybrid, volunteering to start hybrid before it was rolled out to everyone. So our English learner level one, level two, and some level threes in grades one, two, and three could start hybrid and could come to school every day. Those are the students who we're seeing the lowest attendance and the lowest engagement out of our EL population K through 12. So, you know, hopefully there, if all 13 said yes, that would be about 260 English learners that we would be able to have start hybrid as soon as possible, maybe even last week in February, first week in March. However, that's a very, very small percentage of our, about 2,200 ELs in the city. So that's just sort of our next steps and what we feel like we can do right now. Because as you heard from the parent testimony, this, a large part of this population is struggling with remote education at home, albeit it works for some students and has been successful for some students. It's not the best model for this particular, for this particular high-needs group.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Ms. Auger, and thank you, our family liaisons as well. Stella, Mirlande, Mirland, thank you for your incredible work at the Parent Information Center. Always with your open arms to help everyone. I've seen that in person many times. So thank you for all, the two of you and all family liaisons do it. And Mirlande for your leadership as well. Really, really appreciate it. And for those parents, thank you, obrigado, gracias, for that powerful, merci beaucoup, for that powerful, those powerful testimonies that they've shared with us. That's the reason that we're here tonight is to hear from them, as we are hearing also from Fernanda and Flavia. Members of the subcommittee, do you have any questions or comments to our guests tonight? Ms. Mari?
I was wondering if I could ask a question of the superintendent?
Sure.
My question is regarding the parent surveys that we sent out sort of en masse to the families regarding hybrid and what our results were. I believe the last I heard, our results are a little different than some of the neighboring communities, where some of the neighboring communities are hearing that a lot of the white, English-first language families are the ones that are pushing to come back. And the English-second language, the English-language learners and sped parents are more reluctant to come back in some of the surrounding areas like Chelsea and Revere. It's actually the opposite in Everett. Is that correct? And could you say more about that?
Sure. Yeah, so even since I presented that data the last time, we have received more responses. I didn't present it again only because it pretty much told us the exact same thing. Nothing changed beyond one percentage point, if even. And yes, we saw that 55% of families wanted hybrid and 45% wanted to stay remote. But when we looked at that 55% of families, it was many of our English learners. And so we had a lot of, specifically our Portuguese-speaking families, who, when we looked at their surveys, they predominantly wanted to return. So we're definitely seeing that there are specific groups that are pushing. And I would say that you're right, in different communities, it's looking very different. But I think that your observation is right on.
Thank you. Do you have any hypotheses about why this might be the case? Why we're seeing a different response in Everett than some of the surrounding communities?
Maybe we're doing a better job with translations of our surveys. Actually, I don't, I don't know. So we've actually tried to figure that out. I, oh, you know what, Marlon probably has a much better answer than I do.
I was gonna say, we've had people move to Everett just for our special ed program. And they don't deny it. I just moved from Everett because I've heard about how great your special ed program and and I was, I'm saying what? Yeah, yeah. So many people have moved to Everett because of how our special ed program has been for the past years. And I can also, I can say from going to a different school, we do have a lot of, we are doing, we are better than most of the schools. I'm not saying that just because I work for Everett, but people pay, do pay attention and they know and they trust the special ed teachers and EL teachers to send their kids in a safe environment because I've heard it all. It's the EL, the special ed program and all that, so.
Good.
Thank you. The other, I also wanna just say that Superintendent Tighiliani, I think that there may be some truth to your comments about the way that we're engaging our special populations and our high-needs families. And so I wouldn't necessarily be so quick to dismiss that as a very serious win for Everett. And I think it's probably a combination of both what you were saying and what Marlon was saying. I'm of the same mind, although I would love to see some data to pan that out. I think similarly.
It's also a different population, you know, it's, of course, we, we're as, not as, but Chelsea has a different population than we do. You know, so that may have a different impact.
And I will say too that our family liaisons really have been not just accepting calls from families, but they've been really active in reaching out to families. So as you heard, we've got family liaisons who are calling 200, 300 families to kind of get a sense. And I know their special education department does that same thing. So we really are trying to, for those that we're not hearing back in responses in, you know, digitally for many reasons. Some of, I can't decide yet, or I don't know enough about hybrid and these are all perfectly reasonable. But then we're actively seeking some of this other information as well through WhatsApp and through some other avenues. And did you also have something to add?
Yeah, I don't know. I honestly don't know the E-Learning Center sort of parallels that other districts are offering, if any, or as many spots to those. But there may be an uptick in parents feeling comfortable for hybrid from the EL population because some, so they've already seen the success of the E-Learning Centers and they've already seen how we mitigate risks and have protocol in place. So that, that also might be making them feel more confident to return to hybrid because they're already bringing their children to school every day.
That's an excellent, excellent point.
Thank you all. Mirlande?
And I also wanted to thank Kim Sai. We also have one population that we didn't really bring up. Our homeless families were in other cities or that, you know, like for example, Kim had dropped off a couple of hotspots to Dorchester because she lives in Dorchester. I mean, flood, I didn't mind doing, but she's like, it's my way home, I can do it. So we also have to include them that we, and on all, because the I-Everett students, but homeless in another city. So we reach out to them often. Kim has been amazing helping me out with them. So thank you, Kim.
Absolutely. On that note, just want to remind everyone that our schools have a unique program in the state that we assist some of our kids who qualify, who are homeless in the high school. There are some qualifications with rental assistance as well. It's a pilot program that we've been doing that in partnership with the Mestres House and Shelter Alliance. And it's a pilot program that started in Everett three years ago. We are in the third year of funding that program. So yes, our homeless student population is here and they are welcome here and we need to support them as well. Any other question, members of the committee or any of the educators or our guests tonight, our special parents, Fernanda and Flavia?
Just one quick question, if you can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Are we looking at K through eight differently than the high schools? From, you know, an EL and special ed perspective, I know spread in the older population, older student population is more of a concern. And I've heard more from students than I have from families about anxiety with not necessarily from any specific population, although some have experienced, you know, whether it's special ed or different different learning ability. So I was just curious if that's a different model than
Ms. Lumber, is that a question, is that a question for the superintendent, Ms. Donahue, Mr. Donahue, Ms. Lumber?
The superintendent, Mr. Donahue or Ms. Auger, I'm sure EL and special ed are gonna be different from each group anyhow.
Right, I missed the question. Sorry.
Sorry, I thought I fixed it. So for special ed, I've heard from more students, more so from special education backgrounds, but high school students that have more anxiety about home, less from the families, more from the students. And so what does that look like and how much different will it be where spread is more concerning in older student population?
Is it, are you talking just amongst like the high school kids being a little bit more nervous to go back because the spread is, could be more with high school students?
Yes, and you know, how do you accommodate, you know, whether it be a student part of hearing concern about masking or, you know, a sensory student, you know? So there's a lot more anxiety, not just about spread, but about the environment.
Yeah. We've been buying certain things for a certain student population, whether it's clear masks, additional hearing equipment, doubling up on that. So if a student has one set, we wanna make sure they have two, just to have one in school and one at home. I'll be honest with you, I, most of the questions I get from high school students is to change their classes without telling the high school that I'm doing it. So anytime I really hear from high school students is because I changed one Lafayette students. So that's spread around. So a lot of high school students email me trying to get into a different biology class. So I can start asking them as an exchange for helping them with their schedule. I usually don't change it anymore because I don't wanna get in trouble, so. A lot of them, but yeah, I'll check it. I actually talked to quite a few, so I'll look into that for you. I had not heard that with the high school kids. But I will be honest that we've been looking more at the elementary subseparates and so I will take a look at that, but that's a big.
Mr. Barrett, if I could just provide, think, is the question also the difference of what, you know, hybrid or a full in-person schedule look as compared to the Webster or the high school? And the difference on that, I think that's to the point I made regarding the hybrid's gonna look different. Certainly Webster School is a lot smaller than the Lafayette, the Kavarian or any of the larger schools. The complexity is a lot easier for me to manage at the Webster School. But I think it's important to understand that every population is gonna have their own challenges. A high school student is gonna be quite different than a kindergarten student. And I think that's just part of the plan in that we certainly have been doing with the teachers and the leadership. Like I said, but just to continue to look at the success that the teachers have already had, have done a wonderful job. But acknowledging that each school is different and each program's gonna have its own challenges that we'll have to overcome.
I agree with that too, and I didn't even really think of that too, because they probably watch the news more and they pay attention to it more. And I hadn't really even thought of that they would have the same concerns that we would as adults because they're watching and they're reading about it more. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
I don't think that high school ELs taking COVID seriously is a concern at all, especially considering that many of them to get COVID would mean that they could not go to work. They are out working in industries, construction industries, they're out working in industries that are able to be working in person right now. They're taking buses, they're taking a tea, they're practicing social distancing and masking and protocols in the professional setting. So I think they, you know, they have faced such a, that's, you know, $100 a week, $200 a week that they would be out if they got COVID. So I don't have any concerns about English learners taking it seriously at the high school.
Interesting that you say that because I heard from two students, and again, it's only two students, but their concern is that because they are out working, that they're putting their teachers' levels. So it was, that was a different anxiety. Just a conversation I was having with two students when they were talking about, their concern was because they're working, one in a restaurant and one in retail. So it's a good point.
Great. Just on the high school students, the amount of high school students, siblings that are helping to support me at the Webster School with their younger siblings is one of, I think, the best stories for my tenure at the Webster School. They've been a wonderful partnership as all the families have been at the Webster School. But to see, to just firsthand that not only like Ms. Auger said, that they have jobs and they certainly are supporting families, but coming to the Webster School, looking for hotspots, Chromebooks, trying to help their younger siblings is just, it just shows you the strong partnership we have, the families, the teachers and everybody in the community. So it is just, those EL students certainly are the heroes among us and done a wonderful job to support us.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Well, I just wanna thank everyone for participating tonight. As I mentioned, the goal of this meeting with the subcommittee tonight was to hear from our parents. Especially, and the goal was to hear from our parents with the special ed and also our English learners. We took a lot of notes. We'll be reporting back to the full school committee in our next meeting. I want to thank our administrators, educators, our parents, those who provide testimony. I want to thank our family liaisons for the work that they've been doing. I do believe we, we are providing better services to our special ed and English learners, especially regarding translation. That's a lot that we, we can do, but I believe we've been doing a great job thus far. The goal of this subcommittee, as our name is Equity, Inclusion and Diversity, is to make sure that everyone, as the name says, inclusion is served well in our district. Everyone's voice, it's important in this process to know, to go back. Our teachers' voices are extremely important and we hear their voice as well. The goal tonight was to hear from our parents. But everyone's voice is important. I could not end this meeting without urging our own governor to think twice and make all efforts possible to bring vaccines to our teachers so we can safely return to our in-person learning through our hybrid model. So if anyone in Governor Baker's administration is hearing us tonight, we urge you to prioritize our teachers and bring vaccines. But in the meantime, we have to look at several ways to make sure that we, we can return to in-person learning and make sure that those parents that spoke up tonight have their voice heard as well because they need us and their kids need us as well. So the members of the committee, any other questions before I ask you to motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion made. And second, I just want to thank the superintendent and her team for joining us tonight. And to members of the public who are watching this meeting live on Facebook. So before we adjourn, Ari, let's do a roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, and thank you to everyone for coming.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. And thank you also, our vice chair, Mr. Abrauzes, for joining us this evening. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a great night.